We're just trying to help you.
I really think we need to camera the podiums that way.
We do not.
Call it here. Sign up here and flash live.
What kind of pizza you got back there? What was it? Did you know that's my favorite?
But he doesn't need any.
That is a true statement. That's a true statement.
I don't either.
Call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe seated. Just go ahead and apologize right now. Been a long time since I've had the gavel in my hand, but we'll get through this together. Uh, any patron comments?
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Grable, do you have any changes to the agenda?
We have two, uh, two additions, two changes to the agenda. Uh, under number seven consent agenda, add number five Teresa Breedlove, high school, um, special ed, long-term, long-term substitute teacher. And then under number eight, action items, add item G, uh, approval to seek bids for high school chiller project.
Do you have a motion to, uh, the agenda changes?
I make a motion that we approve of the changes to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Dr. Grable, get the public hearing on collective bargaining?
Yes, this is the, the public hearing on collective bargaining. Uh, we have to have this prior to, this is a statutory, uh, statutory hearing that you have to have prior to beginning, um, formal bargaining. Um, so we have a set of slides we go through. Uh, PCTA, you know, has, has been the opportunity to, to comment, um, make any comments they want, and then the public can make any comments that they want related to, to bargaining. Um, so we just kind of have the typical slides. We just talk about just the process and the timeline and, and those things. We'll, we'll walk through here real quick. Um, subjects of bargaining, the legislators changed this several years ago. You used to bargain language and, and all kinds of things. It was a huge wide open process, uh, several years ago. They narrowed that process. Now you only bargain wage, salaries, wages and wage-related benefits. Um, and, and that's it. That's, that's all we bargain now. So these, these are all the things that used to be part of bargaining, uh, that now are prohibited subjects of bargaining. You, you no longer bargain any of these things. Uh, these, most of these things were shifted to, um, discussions. Um, some of them are, aren't even discussable, but we, we tend to still, still do that. Um, evaluations, hours of work or what you would call working conditions, um, safety issues, the, the teacher appreciation grant, um, class sizes, hiring, uh, issues, uh, discipline, suspension, expulsions, uh, budget appropriations, so on. The school calendar, curriculum, materials, teaching methods, teacher dismissals and so on. So again, these are all, uh, items that, that are prohibited from, from the bargaining table. So when you go to bargaining, now you're, you're just basically looking at primarily the education fund. To understand that, uh, you, you have two, two accounts now. You used to have five different accounts. Now you have two accounts, education and, and operations. Education is funded through state sales tax pretty much solely, um, through state taxes, which is mainly sales tax. Um, and that's pretty much funded based off of your ADM, your average daily membership, the number of students enrolled, um, in your school corporation on two different dates. A date that's usually October first and then a date like February first. Um, you are dates near those. Can only be used for instructional expenses, including teachers, uh, principals, counselors, uh, media, library staff, aides and, and paraprofessionals, uh, and classrooms, instructional supplies, et cetera. Uh, may not be used for non-instructional items. Um, operations, on the other hand, is funded through local property taxes, uh, used for transportation, bus replacement, capital projects, maintaining your buildings, uh, utilities, this, this, this office, um, business office, et cetera, uh, human resources, custodial maintenance, property insurance, those types of things, uh, cannot be used for instructional items, um, cannot be used for bargaining unless resolutions are passed, um, and so on. Changes, uh, that we'll be, we'll be looking at at the bargaining table and, and trying to make adjustments to this year. The legislators raised the starting salary for, for teachers to forty-five thousand, um, starting this year. Um, you, you, you need to try to get to that route. If you can't get to that route, there's procedures you have to follow of, of stating it at a, a publicly at a board meeting and posting it on your website. There's some public shaming basically that you have to go through at, at a public meeting and, and posting it on your website until you can get there. Um, um, the sixty-five percent of tuition support money, um, has to go towards teacher shop salaries. We typically, that's not been an issue. We've been at or above that. Um, that's been there because it's, it's salaries and benefits, you know, all, all the calculations go to that. Um, so it's, it's benefits such as retirement, insurance, et cetera, and salaries. And it include, they've included more into that mix, including counselors, uh, shared service employees, like if you're in a co-op, um, permanent subs, adjunct teachers, they've included more into that mix. And then the funding floor, um, you, you cannot decrease your funding floor, uh, unless your enrollment, uh, drops or the, your funding dramatically decreases. So, um, some pieces of the law we'll have to keep, keep an eye on and, and try to, to maintain. Uh, as far as the timeline for bargaining goes, uh, you can informal, but do informal bargaining prior to September fifteenth. You just cannot enter into any, um, tentative agreements, uh, prior to that. Um, you have to have that public hearing before you start formal bargaining. That is what tonight is. That's what we're doing now. Um, formal bargaining, uh, cannot begin until after September fifteenth. Uh, and informal bargaining has a set timeline. It runs from September fifteenth to November fifteenth. You have a sixty-day calendar. The parties hopefully in that time period reach a tentative agreement. Uh, once you reach a tentative agreement, we then have to have another board, another public hearing. We have to post the tentative agreement online. Um, you have to advertise it, post it for so many days, and then you have to have another public hearing on the tentative agreement, uh, so many days prior to the board approving it, um, to, to give the public an opportunity to, to comment on the, the tentative agreement prior to the board approving it. Seventy-two hours before the board would then approve it, so, um, for that public testimony on it, so. So there's some timelines you have to meet, one, even after you come to an agreement with, with the association on it, there's some timelines and hearings you have to have before you can even approve it. Now the teachers can go ahead and ratify it. This is, this is timelines before the board can approve it that have to be met. Obviously there's other things that have to be followed. Herb has a set of compliance regulations that have to be followed. The legislators have a set of compliance laws that have to be followed. The state board of accounts has a set of laws that have to be followed. For example, you can't enter a contract that's where your deficit financing, uh, for example, look, the DLGF has a set of laws similar. So you have all these different regulations and parameters that you have to follow to enter into a proper contract. Um, you know, our goals are the same, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll go into it with the open mind and, you know, we, we wanna hopefully come to a quick, quick agreement, um, meet the, meet the regulations and, and laws that laid out there and, um, and do what we can for our teachers, you know? We, we wanna stay competitive, you know, that's, that's the market we're in. You have to stay competitive to, to attract and retain teachers and that's our goal and then we, we strive to, to do that. And, but it, it's getting more and more difficult as you were declining enrollment. And, you know, the legislators say, oh, we gave you two percent new money. No, they did not, you know? That's, that's a challenge we're, we got. They, they, we did not get two percent new money. That's, that's, when you're in decline in enrollment, that's, that's a challenge we're gonna have to work with, so, um. But, you know, we're, 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 we'll see what, see what it, what it is and what we can do, so. PCTA.
I should go help the layer now? Or can I stay?
You, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine now.
Okay, so it wasn't that long ago, like, at all, that we were literally doing this exact same thing for our last contract, so.
A month ago.
Feel like it's deja vu, yeah, literally like a month ago. Um, and at that time we did express, um, optimism that we would be able to work together to make some meaningful steps towards not only improving access to some affordable healthcare options, but also continuing to invest in wage growth for our teachers. Um, unfortunately, that is exactly what we all did. So as we head back to the table, we are just as optimistic about the work that we have ahead of us for this contract. We're not naive, right? We know what like the parameters are. We know what the funding looks like. We know the financial realities over the next few years and we know that it's going to be difficult. But we also believe that together we can continue to persevere. Together we can continue to find ways to invest in our students as well as the educators that they rely on. Together we can find a way to guarantee a reasonable cost of living adjustment and secure the promise of affordable, accessible retirement. Together Panthers are going to come out on top and we look forward to continuing the progress that we have all started together. Thank you.
It's also an opportunity for just general public testimony, and it has to be limited to collective bargaining topics and obviously concise and cordial. You went through the public? Well, that would conclude our public, public hearing on collective bargaining. Thank you to all the, uh, people involved with that. We appreciate that, uh, the time invested in doing that. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Open that up, any motions?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I second it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carried. Action items. Dr. Grable?
First item, we have Shanna, Laura, our food service director here, just to, just to give some information, answer questions for the board. Uh, it was advertised right before school started, you know, Logan's Fort, um, went to a model where they were offering free meals, free breakfasts and lunches to all of their students. Um, you know, unfortunately, we just weren't in a situation to be able to do that. And Shanna's here to kind of explain the, the difference between why they can and, and why unfortunately we're just, we're not in the same boat to, to do that.
Yeah, simply it's, it's the numbers. Um, our percentage of direct certified students is far less than the larger corporations. The USDA reimburses meals at a free rate for only one point six times the identified student percentage. So at the elementary, we have more direct certified students than we do at the high school. And when I met with my state agency lady and in the spring, we tossed around the idea of maybe trying to do free meals just for the elementary, um, because that percentage was a higher percentage. Um, but as the, the year went on, um, we found out that we wouldn't be able to do that this year. Uh, we're about forty-six percent free and reduced at the elementary, as much lower at the high school, as I mentioned. Uh, they calculate that forty-six percent by inputting that percentage into a CEP slider tool that figures your school's reimbursement rate. We would be reimbursed seventy-three percent at the free rate of four dollars and sixty-nine cents. The other twenty-seven percent would be reimbursed at the paid rate of only fifty-three cents, which does not cover the food, the plate of the cost of the, the plate. Um, this would create a financial shortfall in the food service fund, requiring our district to supplement the food service fund from the general fund, which is not fiscally sustainable this year. Um, let's say if a piece of equipment would need to be replaced and the food service fund would not be able to cover that cost, then the general fund would have to buy that piece of equipment if it was needed. Um, my school service food fund is completely funded by reimbursements and à la carte sales. Um, we operate fiscally, financially independent within our school district. So those are the reasons why we can't do CEP this year. But I meet every spring with the state to find out where our percentage is and, and we go from there. So as of this year, we cannot do it, but that's not saying we're not gonna be able to do it next year. It just depends on what our direct certification students are. It is not based on income applications. Income applications is, those could be skewed. So, you know, we have to go by just the kids that are directly certified through the state needing assistance through Medicaid or food stamps, Pana, those type of kids.
So it lets you go per building?
Pardon me?
It does let you look per building, not overall operation.
Cause overall, we did not at all, because the high school's much lower, but at the elementary, we had a better shot there.
Okay.
But still even there, it was a huge risk this year and likely we would have had to, it would have been a big hit to the education account. We, we would have had to been reimbursing food service a considerable amount likely. And it was just a big gamble, so, but that's wait a year and see, see how that plays out.
Thank you for explaining it.
Yeah, very good. Did we get a lot of questions?
Uh, we've not in our office. I think Shanna's got a little bit more, but, I mean, we've not here, but.
A little bit on social media, you know, our wife can't, all the Cass County schools do that. It's not that we're not trying, this is our number, we're just not there.
We, we would love to, you know, and.
Exactly.
I think Logan's Fort was a little hesitant pulling that trigger, cause there was, there was a lot of hesitation, cause of the current federal administration was really looking at, really pulling the plug on that completely, you know? There was really a lot of question on whether they were gonna allow that at all, you know, the, the free meals, you know, for kids and so on. So I think, I think Michelle was really reluctant, you know, and they kind of at last minute, you know, decided to give it a try, so. That, that's where we were, you know, we had a lot of, a lot of conversations about it and we just, our, our numbers just weren't there.
I had followed like the comments on that, just to see what was gonna kind of probably come back to us. And there were probably a few learners that I thought did a great job of kind of explaining the numbers and why the difference, so that hopefully quieted some of them down with the questions, cause it's out of the control of other schools.
Thank you for the explanation and all the details. Appreciate it.
Move on to the approval of the August twelfth, twenty twenty-five board minutes.
Make a motion. That approved. Twelfth, two thousand point five board meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions?
Disconnected.
Perfect.
Item C, approval of the varsity volleyball team.
Discovering.
This, this is an annual, annual request from the volleyball team. They go to the Leo tournament each year and request to stay at, uh, the Rod Sisters' house the night before the game, the night before the tournament, so recommend, uh, recommend approval.
I make a motion for approval of varsity volleyball team to stay overnight in Auburn, Indiana on September nineteenth, twenty-five for the Leo Invitational for Wayne on the twentieth.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item D, approval of the FFA students to attend the FFA convention.
Also, uh, annual request for the, I think it's mainly the officers that go, but there may be a few additional ones. The, the conferences in, uh, convention is in Indianapolis each year, so it's a great opportunity for those kids to go and they tend to come afterwards and present to the board on, on the, what they learned and the opportunities that they, they had at the convention. So it's a, it's a great opportunity for those students and I recommend letting them go again this year.
Do you have any idea how many students this will?
I don't know this time.
I make a motion to approve the FFA students to attend the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, October twenty-ninth through the thirty-first of twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time. Motion carried. Item E, approval of resolution for supplemental pay.
The two, um, life skills teachers at the high school have had a, have an ongoing supplemental pay that's been approved through the, the, the co-op. Um, this is to pay our portion of that. Um, it's a requirement that's, um, that we found out that it has to be approved each, each year prior to, prior to, uh, bargaining, go, go in, the, prior to you doing bargaining, you have to do the, the approving the supplemental pay pieces of that, we found out in a workshop the other day, so, um, you have the, the resolution in front of you. This is just for our portion that's split three ways between the three districts. Um, so recommend approval.
I make a motion to approve the resolution for the supplemental pay for the special ed professionals in life skills classroom.
I second that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time. Motion carried. Item F, approval of donations. Uh, the Andersons, eighty dollars to FFA. Cass County Community Foundation, one thousand dollars to the high school and elementary robotics club. M Harvey Technology and Consulting LLC, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents for the elementary family literacy night.
I make a motion to approve the donations?
Second it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item G, approval to seek bids for high school chiller.
Kenny's here to explain this project, potential project a little bit. The, the two chillers at the high school need, badly need replaced. So we've gotten some initial quotes to kind of give us a feel for the, the cost of the projects and can you kind of talk about the, what the, what the project entails, the scope of it and?
Part of the project is replacing the chiller's pumps. Um, and then an additional piece to that was getting some air conditioning to the main gym, um, installing a couple rooftop units to, to do that instead of, instead of enlarging the chiller size to, to accommodate that. It was a cheaper route to go.
Cheaper route, you mean the, what, put the ones on the?
Yeah, to put the ones on the roof.
How old's the other ones? How, how old are the other ones?
Yeah, the air handlers for the.
The chiller, yeah.
Or the chillers.
Yeah.
Chillers, from what I can tell, are nineteen ninety-seven chillers. They've been refurbished once. Um, train was here four or five years ago, telling me it was time to refurb them again, but on these, on the particular chillers, um, the coil, what they do, if they refurb them, they just replace the compressors, condenser fans and some things like that. Um, but, but they don't update the control boards or anything. And currently both of those chillers, um, with their age, train has discontinued, um, support to those, so the boards are harder to find, so we have a problem there.
It'll be more, more efficient then?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be, they're supposedly more efficient.
Say. Everything's more efficient today.
Well, yes, and they'll, and one of the things we're, we're doing with this upgrade is, um, the current size is a hundred and twenty-five ton. We're taking them to one-fifties, so it'll help with, you know, potentially putting some, if, there was some talk a while back, getting air conditioning to like the wrestling room. And of course the main gym, but we're gonna use rooftop units for that instead if we, if that all, if this all goes through.
This is a different kind of, I'm talking about, is a different kind of coolant system?
Yeah, with, with the old, uh, with the, the units that we have, there are twenty-two units. Um, they're, they're a split system. They have the, the barrels for the, uh, for the units are inside. That's where it converts the, cools the water, chills the water. They're inside, so you don't have to, uh, run valves or glycol in the system. But now that the new units are running on a, um, four, I don't remember what the number is. There's a new refrigerant, it's more flammable, so now everybody's recommending that the barrels move back outside into the package units. So one of the costs there is, you know, glycoling the entire system. That way they don't have to be drained when we get into the cooler months. That causes, you know, there's all kinds of issues with draining the system, so, or valving it off. Uh, there's some other ways to do it, putting a, a heat exchanger in, but currently, um, the most economical way to get everything done is to glycol the, the system and make it a little more affordable for us to potentially get this done.
How many bids are you looking to get?
Um, we need, we required for at least three from the way I understand, so that's what I'm trying to.
Shoot for three.
We're gonna shoot for three if we can get more, uh, willing to look at them, but.
We originally started down the path, working with the architect company on this and they were, they were pushing for the project to be, being over like one point five million dollars on this. And so we, we pulled, Kenny pulled in a company that specializes in, in this, J and K, you know, that we worked with. And they're like, the architecture companies is, they're, they're overshooting the chillers, you know? They were shooting for like, well.
They, they said that our plans originally called for a four-hundred-ton chiller. And so they were planning on putting two of them out there for redundancy system, which we need, but currently for the last, well, since ninety-seven, from, again, from what I can tell, we, there are a hundred and twenty-five ton chillers. And one chiller, when it's running, you know, at its best, generally handles the entire building by itself until we get into some of those, you know, hundred-degree days and then another stage, one stage would kick on, on the, on the second chiller for a brief while, so we always had plenty at, at that pace, but they thought, um, we needed to go to the, the four-hundred-ton. Part of that was originally, um, we were kind of looking at running chilled water to the air handlers for the main gym to cool that, and they were expecting that load to use up some of that, but. But it's still, I, I, even if we went that route, we were still looking at the one-fifties would, would handle it because we've never had an issue. And now that we have the unit vents, that's made it more efficient than the old tunnel system. But because of cost, the piping cost is what would have run us way over on that. So that's where it's more economic, economical now to put the rooftop units in, so.
I only want to thank you to get these three bids. Will you have it for next meeting or is it a very complex?
Well, we, I've still got a little more work to do on the, on us getting the bid package put together.
Okay. We might need to get an engineer involved to make sure that the, the roof will hold the roof, the roof.
The rooftop units.
Units, that's the only piece that we may have to double check.
We want to avoid the warranty on the roof.
Yeah. So that, we might need to, to do, do that piece, so, but. But you know, with, with, with the quote, the initial quotes, just to see if it was even feasible, it was coming in what, seven fifty, seven hundred fifty thousand?
With the electrical, we were, we were just a little over like eight forty-five, something like that. And those were all just ballpark so far, a little on the high side from what I was told.
But that included the AC in the main gym, you know, too.
That, that's including everything that we just talked about, the new chillers, the new pumps, the AC for the gym. And on his one point four, that was just including everything, just the chillers, switching over to the chillers, so.
Sounds very complex. Appreciate your efforts and.
Yeah, so at this point, we're just asked for his to go to bid. It's not to actually pull the trigger on a project, it's just to go get bids, just to get pricing.
I make a motion that we approve the bid for the high school chiller.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Kenny, good luck. Discussion. Anything from the audience, facility reports? Anybody?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. Just to kind of keep you posted on enrollment, we had three students that moved back into Twin Lakes District, but we had five new students come in like the very next day. So we had five new students to offset that, so. Seems like we lose a couple, but we gained, gained some more in. Teacher focuses this year is our checks for understanding and using data to drive and modify instruction. And that kind of drives our PLC conversations and, and our administrative conversations as well. Trying to do a lot more recognition of students and staff. So our staff of the month this year, recognizing our new staff, Kayla Rice, Chelsea Roller and Katie Cow. Now also recognizing custodian Nisa Ruff, and that information's sent off to newspapers, she has a different mission. Also recognizing our students of the month. So we have students of the month, and then we select Panthers of the month from that category. And they have some special things that they get during this, during the, the month that they're Panthers of the month. They get like a, a free slushy, an item from the book fair or the bookstore and that sort of thing. Those students are Stetson Farr, Mason Scott, Brooklyn Clark, Finnick Benel, Allison Delph, Daisy Reyes, Maddie Erickson and Courtney Hanson. They're walking around with lanyards during the day, so if you have to come over to build a scene, you can give them a high five and recognize them. Continue, we're, we're really liking our learning labs. We're starting to work some of the kinks out of that, two times per day for our RTI, MTSS interventions. Teachers are meeting with our interventionist weekly and those are going through walls. Sarah Schwartz this year is providing high ability interventions on Wednesdays. And they're doing things like plant units, working on some robotic stuff, challenging some of the kids. Have seen some high ability kids get a little frustrated because it's hard and that's good thing for them, the challenge. Again, our, our leadership team guiding coalition that we have established, we meet twice monthly to just kind of make sure things are going well in our PLC process. Bring anything to the team that might be a struggle or question. And we've also started a process for our grade card committee so we can do some research on the best sort of grade card to represent our standards and our performance for our students. Attended a workshop, evaluation workshop recently with our administrative team. Also a board meeting for Wild Bash Valley with Emily Harvey. Our in-school suspension process, again, that is more of a teaching, focusing on specific skills, TVRI lessons. Ab and Rod are doing a great job of that. I see some of our students who go down there frequently are going down less. They still aren't perfect yet, but they're, they're improving, improving on some skills. Our monthly school assemblies, this month we're focusing on the anti-bullying protocols, personal best, cooperation and pride. Those are our life skills of the month. Fifth and sixth grade band enquires has been going pretty well at Pioneer Elementary this year, is back at the building. We are working on a permanent location for bands, so fourth grade doesn't have to hear some of their attempts that they're playing down there. Mini FFA started this week, Boys and Girls Club, I believe is starting next week, is that right?
Fifteenth was the target date, I haven't heard differently.
We've got that rolling. Elementary athletics, so volleyball's off to a good start. They've only lost one match so far and they have a big tournament next weekend. And our upcoming things, this Friday's Live United, group's already started working on the courtyard. It's, I think they've got some dirt left in their nails right now. So students and some staff have been working on getting that ready. Kenny got the, the front landscape pulled out by the office and main entrance, so that's going to get a fresh update there. Literacy night on the seventeenth from five thirty to seven. Invite you to come in and see all the activities we have for learning, learning night, Super Mario Brothers theme, so come on out and level up. Student of the month lunch is the twenty-fourth, and then our fun run is on the twenty-sixth. Questions? A lot of stuff going on. Good.
So over at the junior senior high school for a safe and nurtured learning environment, just to, to play up TVRI, we did a raffle draw last Friday, just trying to change it up. We do high five Friday, every Friday, but every kid that came into the classroom got a raffle ticket. And then I called over the announcements, the numbers, created some excitement just to build those relationships between staff and students, giving out pride card for perseverance, respect, integrity and effort. Those are kind of like currency now, so if you get one, it's amazing, kids want to cut to the front of the line at lunch. So they get to hand a card in, they get to cut to the front of the line, three gets you a slushy, and so on and so forth. Fifty, fifty will get you a picture up on the wall for the remaining of, of the career at Pioneer Junior, Senior High School. Plus it would get you a gift card as, as well. So kids are excited, it's the most I've seen them excited about that, and building those relationships with our students. We got Jesse back on the, the twenty-eighth for in-person, just to continue to help our staff with their TVRI focus. Literacy, September nineteenth, Betsy, curriculum specialist is coming in. I'm going to work with our, our teachers to continue to, to tweak and build those maps. Same thing for master of academic standards as well. Service learning, we've got our Live United Day with our seniors. If any of you want to come out and participate in one of the groups, by all means, let me know. We'll hook you up with a group. If you would like to do my group, that's, that's great, you can come out. I've got about twenty of them, so you can join me on the trail cleaning up trash on Friday if you would like. Still have for our underclassmen's, those opportunities to clean after sporting events. College and career readiness, we've got the reality store, starting to plan that for October. And we, as we partnership with Purdue Club of Cass County. And then extracurricular excellence, Mia McKay shot a new school record with one under thirty-four. And then the same night, the golf team shot a school record of one seventy-nine. So congratulations to Mia as well as the golf team. That's all I've got, but junior senior high school.
Couple items, you mentioned Boys and Girls Club. I think last we saw, there was at least eleven, eleven kids signed up for that earlier this week or last week we saw. So hopefully they'll keep signing up, they capped it at thirty, so right as, the other day, we had eleven signed up. Yeah, that was, that's meant to, our, they targeted to fifteenth, they could get that program up, up and running. Greenhouse, I got the brick, brick is finished in the front, other than the cap. I think they're doing something for the cap. And they started finally, started on the door, interior door today. He showed up today to get that started. Did you ever hear on the electrical piece on that when he was here, so?
Hopefully tomorrow.
What's the company? I forget, that's a different company.
Shepler.
Shepler, Shepler's doing the electrical work, so he's,
Thank you.
He's subcontracting out with Shepler to get the electrical tied in inside. So we're waiting to hear on when Shepler is supposed to be back to do the electrical work. But Jason and his crew was, was here today to start on the interior door. So we moved Mrs. Ziegler to the sports room, you know, just down the hall. So to give Jason a little more flexibility to work during the day, so, to get that, get that doorway done. Mentioned Live United this Friday, and then just don't forget, we've got to schedule the budget hearing for Monday, September twenty-ninth at six PM. That's the hearing you got to do so many days prior to approving the, the actual budget. The budget is scheduled for approval at the regular October board meeting. So we had to schedule a special meeting ahead of time, so that's scheduled for September twenty-ninth at six. That's okay, well, we got three. So, so that, that's all I've got. Maybe we had a, the LGF meeting today, everything seemed to be going really smooth for, in that meeting with the budget, so.
We had the meeting today also with.
Oh. Title, title grants, audit, we had a desktop audit for all of the title grants and that went very smoothly.
We met everything.
Yes, and they go, oh my gosh, they gave it, we met with them and they, they said, we want all your stuff in, what, within a week? I mean, they gave us like a week to get everything turned in. I'm like, are you kidding me? This is like budget time and you want all of our stuff within five days and like, well, we're under a tight timeline from the feds. I'm like, okay.
And I think I was a day late on some things, but that was fine.
But yeah, we, they said you, you know, you passed it all with plain colors, so it's like, job well done. That was all the federal title grants, so that was, yeah, that was good, that was good, so.
Anything from the board? Mr. Cox?
I think you reported this one.
Thank you all for coming, safe travels home, appreciate all that you do. This meeting is now.
We will have executive session here immediately following.
He was there.
He was. He was. Got my green.
Just, just don't break.
Thank you.
How do you turn this off? You too. I need you.
Mrs. Miller?
Peace.
It was good to see you. Ms. Brown, you here?